All right. Good evening. This is the January 4th, 2023 Meeting of the Oyster River Cooperative School Board. Happy New Year, everybody. The first item is the approval of the agenda. I would like to add, I've got two corrections. One is there will not be a motion to approve the warrant articles. That will happen after the public hearing. And I would like to add a discussion on addition of a tentative meeting immediately after the deliberative as an additional discussion item. Brian? Motion to accept the agenda. Second from Denise. Discussion. All those in favor of the agenda as modified? Seven in favor and the student rep in favor. All right. Public comment. Is there anybody who would like to speak for public comment this evening? None? All right. Next up is the approval of the minutes from December 21st. Denise?
Make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of December 21st.
We have a motion from Denise, second from Brian. Any corrections? None? All those in favor of approval of the minutes from December 21st? Seven in favor and the student rep in favor. Announcements, commendations, and comments from the district?
Good evening. Ms. Teal from Massway School. I have very little to share as we just reopened school a couple of days ago. It's wonderful to have our students back. We did have a little water leak that occurred over the break, but I just want to give a public thank you to maintenance facilities, SAU, everyone who came together to line up vendors and get the building ready for our students. In the big scheme of things, it was very fortunate, the way things turned out, as it did not impact our kids from returning to school and had very little impact on them accessing the classrooms that experienced some damage. So that's wonderful. Otherwise, I just want to share that our K through 5 SEL Coordinator Felicia Sperry is hosting a parent night for Open Circle. It's a five-week session starting tonight at Massway School. I believe there were 14 parents that were interested in coming, so it was a decent turnout for our first public parent night to do, provide some training for Open Circle. She will be offering a second session after February break on a different evening than Wednesday to be sure other families could have an opportunity to attend, but I just wanted to share that publicly as well so that parents who might be listening, if they're interested in attending an Open Circle training with our school psychologist who oversees SEL for the district, that that opportunity is there. Any questions?
I just want to elaborate, Misty, on your little leak. The little leak.
I was trying to be positive.
I know you are, but I think the point probably was appreciated more accurate or more succinct. The coil in one of the HVAC units on the roof broke. 120-degree water was spraying into the building, ruined several floors, classrooms, floors. And when Misty said everybody got their act together over vacation, I'd included Suzanne, who was here, and our maintenance crew, who was here, and Sue Caswell, who was here. And I can't remember, are we here, Misty, or not? Yeah, Misty was here. And all of them put their hands in there and helped get the place ready. Suzanne was moving books and everybody was really terrific. So when Misty says thank you to everybody, that includes her and the crew of people who really worked tirelessly to make sure the building was ready, so.
Thank you.
Good evening. David Goldsmith, Mohairamit. Nothing big to report. We had a nice transition back to school. We're continuing with our year of the forest work. I will say we also are crossing our fingers, of course, for a maple sugaring season, a little bit out of our control. But one of the nice things that's happening is that we've been, you know, so exceptionally fortunate to have a partnership with Jim Davis, the Assistant Fire Chief in Madbury and all-around Madbury person, who has been working with us since he helped build the Sugar Shack to sugar with us. And this year, we have a number of parents who have volunteered to join him in learning how to work our Sugar Shack, work the evaporator, and take part in the boiling process as he can continue to train more people in our community to do that. We're going to start that this month, so that's a pretty exciting thing for us as we continue this legacy of community work and sugaring at Mohairamit. Questions, comments? Our ceilings and floors were dry all break. Thanks.
Happy New Year. Just a quick announcement in terms of.
Thank you. Thank you, Michael. Again, Happy New Year. Jay Rashard, Principal to Middle School. We have a, the Seussical Junior Performance, that's our drama club. There's over 70 students involved, over 50 actors, over 20 kids on the tech crew. Sarah Coon and Julianne Woodbury, who advised this group, do a wonderful job. They put a ton of time and energy into this. So there's four performances next weekend, so it's going to be a busy weekend. On Friday, January 13th, there's a show at 7:00 PM. Next Saturday, on the 14th, 1:00 and 7:00 PM. And then next Sunday, the 15th, at 1:00 PM. And to be clear, this is at Oyster River High School. It's not here. And I also feel fortunate, next week, we're actually bringing all of our students up, two grades at a time, to check out the performance. So it's going to be a special moment, and thank you for everyone's hard work.
Jay, could you repeat the dates and times?
Yes, absolutely, Jim. Next Friday, January 13th, the first show is at 7:00 PM. Then next Saturday, there's two shows, 1:00 PM and 7:00 PM. And then next Sunday, January 15th, there's a show at 1:00 PM. So kids are super psyched. It's going to be a great show. Thank you.
Good evening. Rebecca Noe, Principal at the High School, and Happy New Year. So I really have a lot of dates for you, just to make sure that you're aware of them. So this, these are our last two regular weeks of the first semester. So we're moving into our midterms. And what that would mean is that January 16th, we don't have school. January 17th through 20th is midterm week. And so I sent that schedule out last Friday, or the Friday before vacation in the newsletter, and I'll also send that out for the next couple of weeks, just to make sure that parents have that and can look that over. The last day of quarter two, Semester One, is January 20th, that last day, the Friday of midterms. And there's no school January 23rd, which is the teacher workshop day. Teachers are finishing grading, they're finishing getting ready for Semester Two and a lot of new classes that start for Semester Two. And then a lot of prior notice, but our eighth grade information night is February 2nd. And so we'll just start getting that information out, and we'll have the middle school also sending that out to eighth-grade parents. Any questions? Thank you.
Others from the district? And from the board? Denise?
Yes. I would like to announce that I do plan to run again for an at-large school board seat this March with the planned retirement of Dr. Morris in 2024. I just think it's important to have continuity on the board, and so I would look forward to serving during that transition period.
Brian?
Not trying to be a buzzkill, but I think that's something we probably should not announce because we do have an unfair advantage with certain people, that we have a platform that other people don't have, which is TV and cable. I'm glad you're running because I do enjoy the many years I spent with you, but I've always kind of had an issue when people use this platform to do that. If they want to do it on social media, fine, but we do have an unfair advantage in the fact that we do have a platform here that no one else in the district has, so.
I'm going to share, I'd like to share with the community that I have decided not to run for reelection in the March election. I think that's a little bit different circumstance, letting folks know that there will be a seat there. I want to thank the board for your trust in me and trusting me with the role of Chair over the last couple of years. I'll have, I'm sure I'll have other reflections before the end of my term. I want to thank the administration and Dr. Morris for your trust and flexibility and patience with me. And I'd like to extend an offer to anybody in the community who is considering running for a school board. I would be more than happy to meet with you to answer any questions that could help you decide whether to run for this or not and anything else about board service. Others? All right. We'll move on to district reports. First up, Assistant Superintendent.
Good evening. I just wanted to inform the community that. I would like to inform the community that we will be starting to plan for the summer soon. Seems a little far away, but it actually will come very quickly. So we will be beginning conversations with Durham Parks and Rec about our REACH program over the summer, and principals and leadership will be talking about other summer programming as well. Some more information to come. Thank you.
So I'll be brief tonight. I just want to share with the community what I've shared with the board. The new middle school will achieve gold status under the LEED requirements. That is an incredible feat. And, you know, absolute credit goes to the community for supporting all the sustainability efforts that are embedded in the new school. So the new middle school will be a gold LEED school.
And I don't know if you remember or not, but what is the, what's the history of other LEED gold schools in the state or in the region?
We will know probably in about, say, eight months where we stand in our sustainability efforts. Everything is pointing to the new middle school being net positive, but we have an independent monitor that comes in and verifies our energy usage. And so that's looking good. If that proves to be true, then we would have, at minimum, the largest schoolhouse in New England that's net positive and very possibly the largest public schoolhouse in the country that's net positive.
Great. Anything else? All right. Business administrator? Nothing tonight? All right. Student representative, Paige?
Yeah, I don't have that much to share because we just got back, but I can say we had our annual holiday basketball tournament at the high school. And I wasn't only there for my own games, I went to do concessions for some other games too. And it was just really great to have a really busy gym, see people from neighboring towns that you don't get to see all the time. So that was really great, really successful. MOR's Coffee House is going to be on the 26th from 6:30 to 8:30, and it's going to be $5 at the door. And then also, the senior class, we're still advertising our Paint Night fundraiser, which is going to be next Thursday, January 12th, from 6 to 8 at the high school cafeteria. And we'd really like more people to sign up for that. So that's, you know, anyone who wants to come, families, small kids, big kids, adults, everyone's welcome.
Great, thank you. No Finance Committee report tonight? Unanimous consent. Is there anything here, it's all policies? Are there any of these policies anybody would like to discuss separately? No? All right. Hearing none, I will move for approval of the unanimous consent agenda, which includes approving the list of policies for second read and adoption, IHBA programs for pupils with disabilities, IHBAC developmental delays as qualifying disability, IKFC alternative diploma for students with significant cognitive disabilities, JICK bullying and cyberbullying, pupil safety and violence prevention and policies. And then policies for deletion, policy IHBA programs for peoples with disabilities, which was replaced by the rewrite of IHBA, and ACE non-discrimination on the basis of handicap and disability, which was integrated with other policies. All those in favor of the unanimous consent agenda? Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. A second from Brian. All those in favor of the unanimous consent agenda? Seven in favor and the student rep in favor. Thank you. All right. Next up is the 2023 warrant articles. And we have those in the packet as a draft. They've been updated based on the latest, you know, the default, and we would not approve that until after the budget hearing, and then it would be ready to go to the deliberative session. Are there questions, discussion about the warrants? Yeah?
Yes. The question is, don't we now also have to include UCC's seat for? So it just currently says to choose at large. What's that? It's there. Where is it? I'm sorry, it's not. Oh, one, two, oh, okay, at the end, got it. Okay, sorry, I missed it.
All right. Other questions about the warrants? All right, great. And then next up is the default budget. We do need a motion to approve the default budget. And then after we do that, if it is approved, there is a form for all of the board members to sign. Please sign on the line under signature next to, in the row that has your name on it. Brian?
Motion to approve default budget.
Motion to approve from Brian, and a second from Matt. Any discussion about the default budget? All those in favor of approving the default budget? Seven in favor and the student rep in favor. All right. I will sign this, and we will send it around. Next up, I'd like to, this is where I'd like to insert the addition of a tentative meeting immediately after the deliberative session. We did this last year. We scheduled and posted a potential school board meeting immediately, like literally the same evening as the deliberative session, so that the school board could meet and address the implications of any changes to the budget or warrant articles that came out of the deliberative session. And I'd like to suggest that we do that again this year. I don't know that it requires a vote, but wanted to put that out for board discussion before we just, we just scheduled that meeting. Everybody's okay with that? All right. Great, thanks.
I mean, I assume the intent was just to go over anything that was discussed or any changes that we made?
It would only be to address any changes that, to the warrants that came out of the deliberative session. So if there are no changes to the warrants in the deliberative session, we would not have the.
The public hearing, not the deliberative session.
No, no, this is, this is after the deliberative.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm.
So this will be February 7th?
Yeah, I remember that, we did that last year.
Yeah. For the, for the public hearing, we still have our regular meeting on the 18th, where we'll address any, any changes to the budget that come out of the public hearing. All right. Public hearing discussion. I actually can't remember what this was all about. I think you're presenting the budget at the public hearing, right?
Yes.
Are there any questions?
So was there anything that we wanted to say? No? Okay. I think it was just a placeholder to remind everybody that next week is the public hearing.
Oh, I skipped that one, yes. I'm sorry. Thank you, Denise. We're moving too quickly tonight. Going back to assigning the presentation of the warrant articles for the deliberative session, I would like to volunteer to present the budget this year. And the only other warrant article is the solar panels, which last year just consisted of reading the article. We didn't even explain it because there were no questions about it. So is there any discussions, or any, anybody who's has a preference?
What about, is there the award? Is the award usually there's someone?
And there's distinguished service award as well.
Right. So usually there's someone that presents that.
Yeah. Are there any preferences about presenting any of those?
I'd be honored to do the distinguished service award if nobody else is. Would like to.
All right.
I can do the solar panels if you need that.
All right, yeah. If there's, if there's no objection, that's what we'll do. All right, very good. Thank you. Next up is the superintendent's self-evaluation.
Thank you. So as I wrote my self-evaluation, what I really wanted to point out is we transitioned pretty solidly to work that we were doing pre-pandemic, which means we started focusing in on students and student learning. And, you know, I looked at the past several self-evaluations, and so much of it was about the pandemic. And when I was writing this one, it really flowed. It flowed because of the work that we were doing on behalf of students and really took on a real focus on supporting students coming back from the pandemic, but also working on refining board policies and procedures that impacted the students. So one of the things that you've heard from Catherine and from Suzanne and other principals is the work on refining the MTSS process. I think that credit should go to the administrative team for continuously working that issue hard and building capacity. And we really were able to do that because the board was so supportive of the tutors that we needed to make sure that that work had substance to it. I think the other place that I want to commend both Noe and Jay is the alignment of the high school and middle school schedules. We kept the integrity of a middle school model, but at the same time, we were able to align the two schedules for the first time in the district's history, which, over the years, will pay many, many benefits to the students. You know, historically, we have seen our middle school kids, who have exceeded our capacity to teach them in math, go to the high school. I think we're on the cusp of seeing that happening in world language. We certainly have been able to utilize our music staff much more efficiently this year than we ever have, so it works for the adults as well. And I think that was an incredible accomplishment. I think the major piece under competency-based learning was the work on the reporting mechanism that we were using. You know, we recognized, probably too late, that the reporting from the middle school was completely inconsistent in terms of teacher to teacher. And Suzanne and Jay and the teachers really, you know, got deep into that late spring, early summer and fall. And I think that the feedback so far from parents has been really positive. I think our efforts around social-emotional learning were really, again, about thinking about the whole child, the idea that there's more to school than academics, and helping children make good decisions, refining their executive functioning skills, and really having a sense of who they are as people. And, and that feeds into the work that we began this past year at Restorative Justice as well, helping children understand that they're making choices and helping them understand how to make better choices. Really fits into our whole SEL model and moves our system away from a punitive model of discipline when possible. There's always those extremes in any situation where we have to stay in that more punitive model, i.e. weapons in school. But there's a lot of work that we can be doing to helping kids assume responsibility for the choices they're making. I think outside of the academic area, the work that we've done on safety in this past calendar year has been, I would use the word monumental. We saw the three chiefs come together, the three departments come together with the school system and start working in unison on issues around how we are reacting to safety issues. Now granted, all of that work was precipitated by the awfulness of Uvalde, Texas, but that, the positive piece that came out of Texas, unlike other situations, was that we got this incredible report where we could see where the weak spots were in the response there. And it became a really roadmap for us, looking at our own facility and, and starting to think about how we could improve our emergency response plan. Credit to this time, I would give to Mike Nicolosi, our SRO, who has been just pivotal in rallying the administrative team and the three departments. And then up to and including UNH's Police Department, because that was our connection to the possibility of using software to open up our security systems to police in times of crisis. I think that the work that we are doing as a system with 19 other school systems in the state challenging this, actually the state funding formula and the adequacy that the state of New Hampshire provides, will end up in court. It will likely end up, I would predict, in a positive place in April in court, where the courts will, you know, make a determination. But I would predict that the determination would be in favor of the school systems. That sounds good until you realize that there are multiple ways for the state to appeal. So if we can get through April and we get a positive vote, then we'll start that process of going through the lawsuit. It's really a pleasure to have the pandemic in our rearview mirror. It's not gone, but it's not occupying the center of our universe anymore. But when it did, I really want to take a moment to thank Catherine Plord for really being the, she stepped up and took charge of how we were addressing COVID issues. She was the person who would go into the reports from the DHHS and the reports from the CDC. And then she would look and see what other systems were doing, and she'd sit with me and say, this is what I think we should be doing, and then regularly reporting to the school board. So I'd be remiss in not mentioning Catherine in this report. I think that the board's support of a DEIJ coordinator has proven fruitful already in the first semester. We have the report from Rachel, and she'll be doing another report in two weeks. I think that has been such a great help to the school system. In addition to Rachel, we hired a communications coordinator, and Jen Brown hit the ground running. She's been amazing, just a really hard worker. And the number of press releases alone, sharing what we're doing in the district, has gone up geometrically since she's been on board, as well as taking on major issues to help our staff communicate more effectively. And then in terms of the board's actions over this course of the school year, just being, your being willing to bring the tutors on, provided, you know, a real backbone of depth for, for David and Misty and for Jay and Rebecca. And also, the ability to have a fourth counselor at the middle school really made a difference in our, our approach to counseling at the middle school. So I think that it was kind of fun to write this self-evaluation. My job is really to motivate and point people in the right direction and help them present to the school board in a way that's informative and thoughtful. I think that our administrative team and the teachers who have worked on these various projects have just been incredible in coming out of COVID. And I really enjoyed the student focus of this school year, this calendar year, and focusing on how we support kids. And I think we've done a really great job of doing that. So that's my self-reflection, Michael.
Thank you, Dr. Morris.
You're welcome.
All right. And we will, we will begin our work on the evaluation of the superintendent in non-public session later on this evening. The last item under discussion in action items is to select a superintendent's search committee outside vendor and appoint an administrative liaison to the search committee. You have a summary memo that kind of wraps, rolls up in brief the two proposals that we received for superintendent search services, one from the New Hampshire School Boards Association, which contracts with a third-party firm to do that, and one from NESDEC. Dan and Denise and I reviewed these, discussed them, and looked at track record and some of the features of the proposals and recommended that we, that we go with NESDEC as our preferred, as our contracted provider for superintendent search services next year. We would, if, if the board were to approve that selection or decide that we should go with NHSBA, we would be looking to engage them in the short term to fill out, you know, to develop a more complete superintendent search plan that would, that would provide more detail on exactly who would be involved, what size groups, at what points in the process. And then the other piece of this is to provide the superintendent's search committee, you know, now and, you know, a full search committee later on, with a connection to district resources and day-to-day operations. And we would like to recommend that we appoint Catherine Plord as the liaison to the committee. So that's the, that's, Dan, Denise, anything to add from our work there? Okay. UC? UC?
To choose outside vendor for superintendent search, and to choose NESDEC as the outside vendor for our superintendent search, and appoint Catherine Plord as the superintendent liaison of the board's.
We have a second from Brian? We have a second from Brian? Is there any discussion? I apologize if my mic was off. I don't know how long it was off for. All right, all those in favor of selecting NESDEC and appointing Catherine as liaison? Seven in favor and the student rep in favor? All right, thank you. Are there any committee updates tonight? No committees were meeting over the holiday break? Anybody who'd like to speak at public comment? All right. We've got our closing actions down below here. Dr. Morris will be busy with meeting with select boards and councils on our budget coming up over the next few weeks, so we have our budget hearing on the 11th. Yes?
Can I just clarify with Sue? Is our, do we have a manifest prior to the regular meeting on the 18th?
Ah.
So we'll need to make arrangements to come into the office, or do you want, maybe come on?
We may need to do that, now that you mentioned that. The reason we didn't have one this time was we're working with a new payroll system, and that's been a real challenge. And then we know we're going to have a new AP system, and we're debating when we can actually make that happen, so we'll be in touch.
I have an idea. Maybe perhaps prior to the budget hearing? Was that a possibility?
That's a possibility. Is that okay? We'll let you know. Thank you for asking.
So Manifest Committee will meet next week before the budget, before the budget hearing?
Right. That's the plan, but I'll let you know otherwise. Thank you.
Well, you also need another manifest review around the end of the month, since we don't have a.
Yeah. Is there one scheduled? I believe there is one scheduled.
Okay, it may, it may just not have made it on this list.
Right, yeah, it might not be on there. But if we needed one, we would have put it on there, so.
Right, okay.
Sue, can, just before you leave, I'm watching your body language. In terms of the new software, it's been a challenge for Sue to be working through the payroll, and would you prefer that the next manifest be at the next board meeting as opposed to trying to push it on the 11th?
Well, the reason I wouldn't prefer it is because we do have a number of bills that are probably going to have to be processed, so we'll probably want to get one together.
I just wanted to make sure you felt like you could do it.
Yeah, no, but thanks for asking, but I'm thinking that, you know, we're going to have to pay some bills, so we'll do what we can, might not be all of them.
Okay.
Just so we can get them through. Is that okay? Thank you.
And if you need some help on payroll, I hate to admit, I am the guru at Infinitive Division's payroll. Not by choice.
We're, we're working through it. It's a challenge. Thanks.
All right. So, yeah, next week, right here, 7 o'clock, the 11th, for the budget hearing, and then our next regular meeting is two weeks from tonight, right here as well. With that, I would like to move that we enter non-public session pursuant to New Hampshire RSA Chapter 91A, Section 3, Paragraph 2, Subparagraph C, which is matters which, if discussed in public, would likely adversely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of the public body itself, for work on the superintendent's evaluation. We have a second from Matt. This requires a roll call vote.
Heather Smith, yes.
UC Terrell, yes.
Dan Klein, yes.
Michael Williams, yes.
Denise Day, yes.
Brian Sisneros, yes.
Matt Bacon, yes.
All right. Thank you very much. We will enter non-public session. There are no other agenda items after this. We'll just be coming back to adjourn, so thanks, everybody, and good night.